Two, three.
Nine, four, I don't try.
Have you have any reference to some of the products?
You'll come back.
Okay.
Red, white, blue.
There's.
Do we have boards?
Yeah.
I think we're like that. But here you hear. Are there any outside or some problems? I don't know. For the mayor. Other.
Yeah.
It's probably a void. He's running on a boat. Beat that. It should be a change. Lot of them. I do. There will be some areas to slide.
I don't know.
They're really.
Is it four?
Four. Four of it like fifty subparts. Four.
Four slides. Three, like this.
For this year.
There's a few.
Yeah, it actually sold last August. We were getting nervous.
Let me give it down.
Don't want nothing. Should look like they didn't make the.
I just.
I think that. Phil's sitting.
I think we're reading them.
Like, call the phone number. Get it off the. Answering for the. Text version. When it's Tuesday. Five, I'll call you back all week.
Yeah.
That's the.
What it was.
Yeah, this will.
Change you and friends. Do we have anybody that's.
Not. How you guys. Need to call in my hand. I've got a set of things to wait. He's. You're not a job. You have to keep it up each other. Oh, it's a loose thing.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah. I haven't had enough. Different memorial. Yeah, a lot of building permits. We've got quite a few subdivision. Yeah, like, uh, that's paired at the point. We also find start back to.
Great. Have a great. With like six, eight, nine.
I don't know. Um, all I can say is that it's an escrow. And, uh, being the first. Uh, that's, uh, pretty important.
No.
Yeah, it's. Can we probably see that? Enter your. What we can do. Now, it's all in our favor. Yeah, for you. No, we have not. Right, well, it's preliminary. Five is set. Fire position. Unless we get a letter asking for it to be in here. Then it's. Uh, crazy. We're going to try to get our kids. They don't like.
Cause I like. Like a little pop. Being the best for party. Everybody can come down.
Yeah, that always.
I just want one to go by my husband's chair.
Yeah.
Nobody knows who's running. I only know him.
I know him.
I started it.
My little buddy guy.
I'd like to call the order that Tuesday, June second, two thousand twenty. Regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Passiak, would you like to say the pledge? Thank you, sir. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner McCafferty.
Here.
Commissioner Passiak.
Here.
Commissioner Switzer. Commissioner Metters.
Here.
Vice Chair Armstrong.
Here.
Chair Merritt.
Here. Okay, I'd like to move forward to item four, A, consideration of possible action to approve the March third, two thousand twenty regular meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look them over? Anybody have any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the March third, two thousand twenty minutes as.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Staff reports. Mr. Cook.
We have no staff reports.
Thank you, sir. So, moving forward to the main event for tonight, item six, A, consideration and possible recommendation of approval to town council to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty-four, by amending the following sections. Section three point five, which is AR thirty-six agricultural residential. Section three point six, which is AR five agricultural residential. Section three point seven, which is AR four agricultural residential. Section three point eight, which is SR two point five. Single-family residential. Section three point nine, which is single-family residential. SR two, three point ten, SR one point six, single-family residential, and three point eleven, SR one, single-family residential, by modifying the guest house requirements and removing section three point five, which is agricultural thirty-six agricultural residential in its entirety. Mr. Dingy, will you explain?
Yes. So, good evening, Chair and Commission. The item before you is a text amendment for the Unified Development Ordinance to address the removal of AR thirty-six agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum, the zoning district, as well as modifying the guest house regulations. The guest house modifications were proposed after receiving direction from town council, as well as concerns and complaints from Chino Valley citizens regarding the town's regulations over guest house, guest homes. Staff feel that feel that the proposed amendment addresses these concerns and provides property owners with more freedom to develop their property and build as they desire. So, getting into it here, um, first section, we're going to just cover removal of agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum. There are currently no properties within town limits that has old diszoning. Staff believe that this is somewhat of an obsolete zoning district as agricultural residential five acre minimum holds the same entitlements, um, but have a smaller lots or smaller acreage requirement. We do not foresee anybody wanting to downzone their property within town limits to the zoning district solely on the premise that, um, doing so would adversely affect their property value. So, seeing that there is, staff can't see a reason for it to exist any longer, we've decided, um, are recommending it. So, secondly here, part of the text amendments, um, is the amendment for guest houses. Uh, under town code, the guest house is defined as a living or sleeping quarters for the sole use of occupants of the premise premises, guests of the occupant of such occupants or persons employed on the premises. Such quarter quarters shall not be rented and/or otherwise listed for income purposes. And that's out of the town code. So, under the current regulations, um, property owners are limited to an eight hundred square foot or a twelve hundred square foot, what guest home dependent upon zone. This square footage is calculated as under roof and not defined as livable or non. So, as a brief diagram here, um, currently an eight hundred square foot, foot guest house somewhat can look like this. Uh, you have a seven hundred square foot livable portion and then potentially a covered porch patio deck, whatever, um, on the front to equate that total eight hundred square foot. Um, under the current code, you are, any sort of non-livable additions to the eight hundred or twelve hundred would not be allowed. So, a garage or if you wanted a bigger covered porch, you would have to eat into that total square footage, making a lot of proposals, um, not people. So, what the, uh, staff is recommending here is a limit to at least twelve hundred livable square foot or square feet or a percentage of the primary residence, whichever is larger. The new proposed regulations would allow for non-livable square footage to not be taken away from the total allowable square footage, I guess. Um, so as an example here, you have a twelve hundred square foot guest house, which is the livable portion. But as the non-livable, you have an eight hundred square foot RV garage and then the potential for a six hundred square foot, sorry, six hundred square foot covered porch, um, or any sort of variation such, as long as they are within that livable square footage, any of the non-livable additions would be permitted. So, this is kind of a lot of the concerns that we've received is, well, I'm only allowed twelve hundred square feet in my, on my AR five property, but I want to put a covered porch, um, or my parents come to visit and they have an RV. I don't have it for the park. So, these would be addressing these comments and hopefully giving these property owners the freedom to build as they. So, the language itself pretty much says the same across, um, all these zoning districts. The only caveat to this is the percentage, um, that is varied through agricultural versus single-family residential. In agricultural zoning districts, we're proposing a seventy-five percent caveat to the, um, allowable guest home square footage. So, this is based, say you have a three thousand square foot home on AR five piece property and under this new proposal, seventy-five percent of that, um, is calculated out to what you're allowable. Portion of the guest home. So, three thousand square foot home, seventy-five percent of that is two thousand two hundred and fifty livable square feet that you would be allowed up to build up to maximum, not including non-livable square footage. The only variation with that is single-family. This is only applicable to one acre or larger zoning, so anything under, um, so the SR point one six prohibited from having these guest homes. The caveat percentage here is fifty percent opposed to what is, um, proposed in agricultural. So, again, three thousand square foot primary residence, fifty percent of that fifteen hundred square feet would be the allowable maximum for livable portion of the guest. Um, we're still proposing the twelve hundred square foot flat rate across all of there, um, across all zonings to ensure that even if you don't have a large guest home or a large primary residence, you're not restricted to this eight hundred square feet. So, some common questions staff has received regarding, um, guest house in general, um, can a guest house be rented? No, by definition, can't be listed for income purposes. Very frequent question we get is, can a tiny home be used as a guest house? Under town code or building code, rather, um, townhomes, park trailers, mo- park models, mobile homes, travel trailers, recreational vehicles, et cetera, cannot be classified as a guest post, guest house, um, based on building code criteria, um, and not being a livable permanent structure.
If I could add to that, it is also in the UDO, uh, within the definitions, it defines when, uh, what, what a manufactured home is, and a manufactured home is not recreational vehicle, travel trailer, park trailer, things like that. Park trailer, travel trailer, those are types of recreational vehicles and cannot be classified as manufactured homes. So, the only thing that would qualify is a single-family residence and a manufactured home qualifies as a single-family residence when it's put on.
So, Josh kind of went into the second question here. Can I use an manufacturing? Guest house, of course, as long as it meets code requirements as well as, um, doesn't exceed this square footage a lot. And then another one we get occasionally is can I construct two guest homes on my property? As long as it's within the allowable square footage? No, code expressly called or explicitly calls out your only. So, with that, I will open it up to questions or discussion followed by a recommendation.
Go ahead, Commissioner Switzer.
It does not need to be attached. Obviously, that's very.
We go back some slides to where.
Yeah.
So. On all the. Guys have a question. Minimum. Guards in your side, we're basically allowing a small.
Correct. Or fifty percent.
Right. But on some homes that they wouldn't deal with. It certainly was. Large, so it's large. Eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
Having impacted how many?
Um, all of these single families, so from SR one up to SR two point five, that affected, um, the agricultural already had that twelve hundred square foot.
Go through the, uh, talking about the AR five, but let's say somebody wants to change that AR five to, to SR two point five.
Okay.
They have a single family, or they have a guest house.
Right. So.
So, I have, I have a five acre AR five. I go to forty PNC eight to the council and I get a lot split to two point fives, right?
Okay.
Okay. But prior to that, I had a twelve hundred square foot home on.
One.
And, uh, three thousand square foot. I go to lot split. What's the impact there? Do you see where I'm?
Right, so, I, I'm not sure if we could recommend in favor of a lot split in that case because it wouldn't conform to development standards.
And, well, it's kind of a, a non-issue. So, if you have two homes on a property and somebody wants to split it, as long as they meet the UDO requirements for splitting that property, which are defined, um, in section five, uh, they could, they theoretically could split depending on the situation of the property. And let's just say they do qualify for a split. They split it, you now have a house on the two point five and a house on the one point, on the.
Yes.
So, you have a, yeah, that would be okay. Uh, and then, yeah, the future owners could then.
Put a guest.
Build their own guest homes.
That's, that's where I was. So, if I had a twelve hundred square foot home on the new two point five lot split, which was previously the guest house, from all the time, could I go to three thousand square foot house on the five? Usually.
Yeah, that is what we would allow.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I don't think town staff or the town in general should care which one you call your primary residence or not. If your primary residence is the one that's already there, then your guest home will be restricted to twelve hundred or seventy-five percent or fifty percent. Um, and I may add, these percentages are, you know, this is town staff, this is staff's recommendation, so if you want to raise those percentages or raise those square footages, I mean, the, the UDO already has a maximum lot coverage already. So, an AR five, you're, you're restricted to a fifty percent lot coverage. So, if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to construct a huge house on an AR five lot, which is five acres, they technically could construct a home that was two point five acres in size, given the fifty percent coverage. So.
Proclude the guest house from being built at that point?
Well.
Coverage?
It would because you have a maximum lot coverage that you're allowed to meet.
So, there, there is some checks and balances there.
That, that is correct, but, you know, if you want to raise those, those square footages of those percentages, I don't see any harm in giving the people of the community more control over what they're allowed to do on their property.
So, just to be clear, the house that winds, the smaller house that winds up in the lot split, you could still designate that as a guest house and build a bigger primary residence?
I would, uh, I would say yes, um, because we only issue one address per property. I know in the past, sometimes they've issued two addresses, but that should not have, that should not have. So, guest homes and primary homes share the same address. So, regardless of which structure you call your primary residence or your secondary residence, it, it doesn't matter.
But to the new property owner, because of the smaller square footage, because it used to be the guest house, will they be able to build something bigger and call it the primary residence?
If that's what they want to do, that, that would be up to them. So, if they want to designate the home that's on that property as the guest home and they want to build a larger primary home.
So.
I was gonna say, we've been talking about the AR five, but if I have an SR two, can I do the same there? You're limited by square footage. Right, no, I understand that, but.
It shouldn't.
I have a twelve hundred fifty, uh, uh, thousand square foot home right now on a SR two. These changes won't hinder me living in that while I go to three thousand square foot home on my own property.
No.
No, because until that primary residence is constructed, the new primary residence is constructed, that guest home is considered your primary.
So, we're sure. I want to make sure.
Well, that's, that's how it's written. I, I don't care which one is your primary or your guest home. You're allowed a primary home and you're allowed a guest home. So, whichever one you want to call your primary. That's correct. Okay. Your primary residence can be as large as you want. Oh, so you're not splitting the homes, you're just splitting off. That's correct. So, that, that guest home would be grandfathered in because it was done before the split. Well, the town's not going to make you tear down a house. Uh, well, I can't say whether it'd be allowed or not. I'd have to look at the circumstances of the lot split, do some property history and stuff like that, but if, given this circumstance, they were allowed to do the lot split, uh, I don't see why we wouldn't approve the lot split because of that.
Go ahead. One last question. Going back, oh, you don't have to go back to it, but the SR, oh, the AR thirty-six. It's an unusual thing, but if I have an AR, if I have a forty acre AR residential five and I want to designate our four for myself, if it's a thirty-six, what zoning would they fall under?
Uh, be under AR five, that'd be the largest and it's, would hold still all the same entitlements as an AR.
Even though it's thirty-six acres?
Correct. The only variation between thirty-six and AR five is the acreage requirement.
Okay.
The, the only time I would think that anything like that might be important to have a larger AR section or code is if we annex further property into the town. But given how much land the town already has that we've annexed in that we wish we could de-annex, um, I don't see us annexing any property in the near future. Most of the property that was annexed in the past was given an SR two, uh, develop, uh, zoning district. So, those property owners are not going to downzone their property to an AR thirty-six. I, I don't see any conceivable reason to keep a zoning district where we have no zoning of that.
So, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
I just wanted to make clear what we're.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Uh, good question. In Maricopa County, I know guest house is accessory dwelling unit for not allowed. Of course, like a stove. Is that allowed in Yavapai?
Um, well, we're not Yavapai County and we're not Maricopa County. We're a rural community, so we're, we follow Title Nine instead of Title Eleven. Um, we're allowing currently the construction of the guest house to be a house, so they have, they can have their own laundry facility, they can, they can have, you know, whatever can go into a house. We're not regulating what they can put in.
And the second is, what's the difference between a guest house and a medical accessory dwelling?
Medical accessory dwelling unit can be classified as an RV. Um, there's a process that the code outlines to where it involves, um, written, or doctor's note essentially stating that this person is on premises for care of the person in the primary residence or vice versa. Um, that's something we allow outright. There's not a defined structure, doesn't have to be an on-foundation structure, it can be an RV at that point. Um, I think that it's in six-month increments, but it's, it's through a permit, yeah.
That, that's through the building code?
Yeah.
Um, our, our UDO does not define accessory medical dwelling, so we wouldn't look at that as a zoning issue.
The only thing I might add to your question about stoves and what's difference between a guest house and a primary residence, the guest house, um, outside of certain circumstances won't be issued its own power pedestal as well. Um, this is to kind of also keep down on the ability to rent out that, um, property, so that, another caveat.
Any other questions?
So, with that, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission order a recommendation of approval to count town council to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty-four, by amending the following sections. Section three point six, AR five agricultural residential. Section three point seven, AR four agricultural residential. Section three point eight, SR two point five, single-family residential. Three point nine, SR two, single-family residential. Three point ten, SR one point six, single-family residential. And three point one, SR one, single-family residential by modifying the guest house requirements and then removing section three point five agricultural residential in its entirety.
So, um, we have staff recommendations and we heard all of the comments. One further question, did, and notice in the notes here that the town has not received any response to the meeting, any questions, any comments with that, maybe other than what you've just shown earlier?
That is correct, um, but since we advertise this as a public hearing, um, we'll need to open it up so that the public can respond if there's anybody that's tuned in to Zoom.
No, I got that. I was just curious.
Just want to make sure.
Had called in and had any comments or questions with you guys other than what you showed up here early?
Um, I've gotten one call from a property owner that would like to build a guest, a primary home on their property and use the existing home as a guest.
Okay, thank you. So, moving forward to the public portion of this, um, item, I would open that up to the public. Anybody here would like to speak as part of the public?
We do have one attendee, but it doesn't appear that he or she is commenting.
Okay, so, hearing all of that information, I'm going to close the public portion of this item and would like to hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission order a recommendation of approval of Town Council to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 154, by amending the following section. Section 3.5, AR-36 agricultural residential. Section 3.6, AR-5 agricultural residential. Section 3.7, agricultural or agricultural residential. Section 3.8, SR-2.5, single-family residential. 3.9, SR-2, single-family residential. 3.10, SR-1.6, single-family residential. 3.11, SR-1, single-family residential. By modifying the guesthouse requirements and removing section 3.5, AR-36 agricultural residential in its entirety.
And I'll go second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions or comments on this item? Okay, so, I would like to have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker. Commissioner McCafferty.
Yes.
Commissioner Passiak.
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer. Commissioner Metters.
Yes.
Vice Chair Armstrong.
Aye.
And Chair Merritt.
Yes. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. So, we'll move forward to item seven, non-public hearing action items. Do we have any of those?
There, there's really no non-action. I mean, there's no action. But some information that I think. Oh, never mind. This will go under the discussion.
Are we good?
No, there's not.
Because I am reading right off of that paper. Okay, so, moving to item eight, any discussion?
There are a couple of things I'd like to discuss. We have quite a few text amendments coming your way. The UDO Subcommittee and staff has been working on a number of them, including agretainment, agribusiness, agrotourism, subdivision regulations. We're also working on conics box rate regulations. I know I'm forgetting one. Oh, yes, off-site signage. Thank you very much. Because of all of those text amendments, staff is hoping that maybe over the next couple of months, we can hold two meetings a month to kind of minimize the number of items we have to hear in. I don't know if that's something that would be okay with you or if you'd prefer to just rip off the band-aid and do them all at once, or, you know, what, what are your preferences?
Why don't we just go around the room here and everybody?
Whatever you do here, you're going to have the same, same portion to the council. They're going to want that.
Yeah, they probably will.
Does anybody really have an objection to take it into bite-sized chunks? Okay, so I think we're in agreement with, with that.
So, in July, we were planning on having the regular Planning Commission meeting where we will cover at least off-site signage, possibly also conics boxes, depending on if we're able to get that language done. And then, we'll have a second meeting, probably the second or the third week of July, where we will cover, the only item on that agenda will be subdivision regulations.
Which will be a probably hefty item.
Yeah, that is correct. Yeah. It's not just dealing with lot splits versus subdivision requirements, it's the entire chapter. So, it's all at section five.
Okay, so, does anybody have any objection to a couple of meetings a month for a little bit till we wade through all of this?
Because on top of that, we're also going to have plats probably to bring to you and then potentially a couple of re-zonings as well.
So, we're hoping you don't work us to death.
You'll be earning your money.
Yeah. It's big dollars too, trust me. Did that cover pretty much your discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate you asking for our input. The other thing is if we can get that stuff as early as possible, because it sounds like we got a lot of reading.
There, there is going to be a lot of reading coming up. We tried to get this to you early of last week and then we had packets ready Thursday morning.
All right, thank you. So, I'm going to go to item nine, public comments. And I won't read the wordage because we haven't had a public response here yet. But it is an opportunity for the public to speak, would the public like to speak at all?
Mr. Chair, I'll let you know that I did not receive anything, any public comment through the email or through Dropbox. I've been told meeting today was the deadline. I don't see anybody online.
Thank you. So, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move to item 10, which is a motion to adjourn. Chairman, I submit a motion that we adjourn this meeting next month.
Second.
And the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We're done. Thank you very much for showing up.
Yeah, thank you.